Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. It's August the 13th, Special Board Meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Could I have the Clerk of the Board do a roll call, please?
Supervisor Johnson?
Yes.
Supervisor Gold?
Okay, thank you very much. We do have a quorum. Everyone seems to be present. I'm going to change the order of the agenda this morning. We're going to go to item number two first, which is the discussion on possible action to approve the adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution Number 2020-108 in compliance with ARS 16645. The Board of Supervisors, this date certify and affirm that the attached is a true and correct count of all the votes cast in the primary in Mojave County, Arizona on August 4th, 2020 and does hereby affirm and declare this as the official canvas. Okay, does anyone have any comments? Mr. Temperet from Elections, do you have anything that you would like to say this morning before we do the canvas?
Good morning, Chairman Bishop, Boards of Supervisors. I don't have much to say except I'm here in front of you to give you a complete incorrect report of all the ballots and votes cast in Mojave County for the 2020 primary election. I will entertain any questions, as long as, whatever they are, you know, but I would like them to be mainly concerning the actual canvas, what we're here to talk about if at all possible.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Temperet, does anyone have any questions for our Elections Director? I see and hear none. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much for your time and your support, and we have another one coming up in a couple of months, so, thank you.
Alan, I would like to thank you very much for an excellent job performed by you and all your associates involved in the Elections Department. I thought you did a wonderful job.
Thank you so much.
Everyone should be very proud of the work that you've done. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Supervisor Watson. I just got also to say, man, it's, I'm the figurehead, I'm the guy standing here in front of you, but it took, unbelievable, it took, you know, my complete staff and the complete staff of the Mojave County Voter Registration Department, you know, to put it together, as always, you know? It took 200 people in the poll sites to do this, where we normally have close to 400, all right? So we're going to be hurting come November unless I get more and more people on board, but overall, it worked out well with the very limited resources that we had out there. So, thank you.
Just for your information, my office did not get one call.
Thank you. I'm glad to hear that.
Thank you.
Okay, do we need a motion on this?
I believe you do.
Okay.
Chairman Bishop, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the report and canvas of the election for August the 4th, 2020, and do hereby affirm and declare that this is the official canvas.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, and if you'll see the Clerk of the Board, I think she has some paperwork for you.
Absolutely. I'll catch up with her afterward, if that's okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you all. Goodbye.
Okay, the next item will be the discussion and action from the County Public Health Director to the Board of Supervisors regarding recent issues, actions, events, and county responses regarding COVID-19, and taking any necessary actions based upon these updates. We have our Public Health Director, Denise Burley, at the podium, and I'll turn the meeting over to you for now.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, I do want you to be aware of a 115 media event that the Governor and Dr. Christ are going to be available for. It didn't say that this was a press conference, per se, it just said "media availability" with Governor Ducey and Dr. Christ at 115 today, is what we've learned.
Okay, thank you.
So I wanted you to be aware of that particular event, in the, excuse me, in case you were interested in joining.
We'll try to complete this meeting in time for those to enjoy that.
Sure. So, we will start out with the numbers. We've had a total of 3,284 cases in the county to date, and 169 deaths. Our average age of cases is 48.2, average age of deaths is 76.8. Any questions on just the data?
I see none.
Okay, all right. So I did want to provide an update on the investigations and contact tracing. The staff there, apologize, I'm just trying to get my notes all in order here so that I can be very succinct in my response here to you. The investigators have made significant progress with these cases, and I believe the word that our, one of our organizers and coordinators said is tenacious team, is what they call them. And so, to that end, we have 71% of our cases have been completed. We have 1%, these are the number of cases that have been reached and refused to participate in the investigation. We have 7% of our cases where the information is invalid, so contact information, so that means we need to follow up and look for other opportunities to reach out to those people. We have 20% of our cases to be completed, and 3% of our cases have been allocated out to the Arizona Department of Health Services. So for the cases that have not been completed, they've all been assigned, and for half of those, about 42%, actually, at least one call has been made to those individuals. For some of those, again, we have, we don't have the contact information, so we're following up on that. Again, some of our cases are assigned to ADHS, and we have the new cases, of course, which are a priority for us, of course, since that's our opportunity really to isolate and quarantine very quickly and get those people, and do our contact tracing. Some important notes around our investigations is that we are, of course, as I mentioned, following up with those cases that are coming in each day, and those are assigned out to the staff. And for, in order to address the older cases that we're trying to go back to, to do the investigation, each of those investigators will be responsible for completing at least a portion of those investigations, so not just assigning one person, although that is one method that we could use, but we also want to make sure that we efficiently and effectively use the time of these investigators, and which means that we can, when they are waiting for phone calls back from current investigations, when they're waiting for that follow-up, they can use that time and fill that time reaching out to the older cases, and we can get that information in having more investigators working on that than just one full-time. Any questions there?
We're good to go.
All right. Weekend case investigations, we actually did have some staff investigators working on the weekends and following up with cases during the investigations, but we're going to more formally define that for you. Assignments will be made to investigators on the weekends, and we do have weekend investigators now scheduled for those times. We are going to coordinate the case assignments to ensure that they have the workload that they need to follow up with those, and follow up and complete those case investigations. We always have a nurse and an epi on-call on the weekends, in addition to most of us who are available to answer questions and address concerns. So there are a number of people, of course, that are available on the weekends, but the epi's and the nurses can help answer questions of those particular investigators should they come up. Any questions on the weekend investigations? Follow-up there?
I don't see any. Thank you.
Okay, all right. So, let's move on. There was a question about Legionnaires' disease, and if wearing a mask could put someone at risk of contracting Legionnaires' disease, and what we want to make clear here is that this cannot be contracted by wearing a mask. Legionnaires' is a bacterial illness that is transmitted by inhaling aerosolized droplets of water from an improperly maintained water system. It is not transmitted from person to person like COVID, and the bacteria cannot live on the masks and cause the wearer to become infected with the disease. So I know that was a question, and we've seen some media coverage of this, so we just wanted to make sure there was some clarification on that particular issue. Any questions there?
Nothing.
Okay, all right. So at the Monday meeting, we discussed, and you approved the use of the fact sheet and the updates to the webpage, and we are in a position to move forward with those changes, but the one piece that was not addressed at that time was the timing of the release of information. I know Supervisor Johnson expressed interest in having information continue to come out at the end of the day, and so I wanted to get some direction on this, and that way we can move forward with the changes.
Okay, does anyone have any comments that they'd like to make as far as the timing? Is there a motion on the floor? Okay, Supervisor Watson, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman Bishop. Yes, I look forward to each afternoon getting that information, so I'd like to make a motion that we continue to report that information in the afternoon.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Okay, hearing none. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes, and you have your direction now. Thank you.
Thank you. Much appreciated. The next topic is about the business reopening guidance that was released last week, and I have Ron Balsamo, who is our Environmental Health Manager here, to provide a short presentation, answer questions. He's been diving into this subject, learning a lot more of it, and he'll be our lead moving forward for the business guidance plan. So, if I could have him come up, and we have a short presentation, as I mentioned.
Oh, good afternoon, and hope everyone is doing well. So recently, the Governor, in conjunction with the Arizona Department of Health Services, has provided what I would call a pathway, all right, for businesses that have previously been closed due to executive order, to be able to reopen, and to be able to reopen safely. And so what I'd like to go through now, and I will say, we've had a ton of phone calls about this in the last few days, and I'm sure that your offices have been receiving phone calls as well. There's a lot of confusion out there, and so I'm really hoping to cut 90% of that confusion away with eight slides. So, there are two key components that the Governor has now required to resuming business operations for those businesses that have previously been closed via executive order. And the first is really beyond the control of the business. It is the level of spread occurring in the community. And the second is under the, you know, influence of the business. It's the quality of the establishment's implementation of COVID-19 mitigation strategies. And so the plans that are presented basically are tailored for the specific types of business operations. So businesses must first attest to their implementation of these strategies prior And so the ADHS has adopted the Center of Disease Control and Prevention Community Spread definitions, and so this is what we will be using going forward until we receive further guidance from the state. So minimum community spread is essentially limited community transmission, no evidence of exposure in large communal settings. Moderate is sustained transmission with high likelihood of confirmed exposure within communal settings, and then substantial is as it implies, large-scale community transmission. And so the ADHS further defines community spread levels with thresholds outlined in the next slide. There we go. And so the three benchmarks that are really inherent upon businesses being able to reopen again are the number of cases, the percent positivity, and the COVID-like illness that is occurring in the hospitals. And so minimal would be less than 10 cases per 100,000 individuals. The percent positivity, below 5% COVID-like illness being reported by hospitals and testing facilities, less than 5%. And then we have moderate, and then we have substantial. Now, one of the caveats here, all right, which ADHS has outlined, is that in order to be in a specific category below substantial, all three benchmarks must be met. So for example, even if you have two greens, if you have one red, it's red. Okay? And, you know, similarly, if you have two greens and a yellow, it's still yellow. All right? So all three benchmarks have to be met for moderate to be, you know, the yellow to be moderate, or green to be minimal. So the business categories that have been affected are indoor movie theaters, gyms and fitness centers, water parks, bars standalone, and bars with restaurants. And so, these are the primary players, and the ones now at the ADHS website, where we have specific guidance on how to open them up safely. And so applying these benchmarks, the way that ADHS is taking this is that all three benchmarks must be met for 14 days with a 12-day reporting lag period. And so as you can see, if the level of spread is still considered to be substantial, none of these businesses will be allowed to reopen. All right? When we get into the moderate range, it's going to depend on the type of business. Bars and nightclubs will still not be allowed to open, however, gyms will be allowed to reopen at a 25% capacity, and indoor theaters, water parks, and bars and nightclubs, providing dining service, will be allowed to open at a 50%. And then, once we get into the minimal, we still have differences between the indoor gyms and theaters, and bars and nightclubs, which provide dine-in services versus those which do not. All right? And so, for a business, when they're getting ready to reopen, it really is essential that they go to the ADHS website, and they get the information that is specific for their category of business. And so the business is going to be asked what sort of mitigation strategies they plan to utilize to maximize safety of not just the workers, but also of the patrons that are coming to the facilities. And so mitigation, the major mitigation strategies haven't changed, you know, since February. It's masks, hand hygiene, contact service sanitation, you know, social distancing, and they've also added now knowing the symptoms, because early detection of employees who may have the disease really is important, and it really is crucial to being able to maintain a healthy business environment. And so when benchmark criteria are met, and the business has developed a mitigation strategy, right, according to the ADHS, then the owner or managers will fill out the ADHS attestation form and obtain approval prior to reopening. So what I'd like to do now is to go to the ADHS site, and I'm just going to walk, you know, everyone around, everyone in the audience, you know, through how to do this quickly and simply. So, for those of you at home, go to the azdhs.gov website, you go to the A to Z index, click Hopefully this works. All right. So, once you get to the homepage, you go to the A to Z index, and you click on the H, and then from there, we go to Heightened Infectious Diseases for Arizona. And this is what I call the money page, because it lists here with hot links the ADHS requirements for the indoor gyms and fitness centers, restaurants and bars, bars and nightclubs, indoor theaters, water parks, and tubing. It also has the reopening attestation form for all of these types of businesses. And if you go to the top on the right-hand side, Business Dashboard, you click on that, and that takes us to a map of Arizona and our current statewide situation. So what you see here in this slide is, we are still, as a state, in substantial. Even though we're in the green now, right, for COVID-like illnesses, and we're in the yellow for the percent positivity, we're still in the red on number of cases per 100,000 individuals. And so as such, it only takes one red to stay red. So what's most important for our local businesses is to go over and click on Mojave County on this map, and the way that the state is reporting these data, and making their decisions, is they're doing it by region, and so it's not just Mojave County, it's Mojave, La Paz, and Yuma together. And so when you do that, you get different numbers, but we're still in the red with number of cases per 100,000. Looks like we're going to be hitting yellow, hopefully, soon, in the percent positivity, and we are now well into the green with regards to hospital visits of COVID-like illnesses. So, it looks like we're moving in the right direction here, all right? But again, keep in mind that this is always going to have a two-week lag. And so, the last thing I want to mention before entertaining questions is, I would like to show the attestation form. So if we click on that link, and we go down to the bottom, and it says "Type of Establishment", and it's going to be one of those five, so I'm just going to pick one, I'll pick the indoor gym. And then, on the next page, it takes you to "County" in which the establishment is physically located. So I'm going to click on Mojave, and it's not allowed, because we are still in substantial territory. However, right, if a business has a strong mitigation strategy, and they honestly believe that they can conduct business safely where we are right now in Mojave, or Western Region, if they click on the "Here" icon as part of this not-allowed pop-up, they are allowed to fill out the attestation form. And so they can still fill it out, they can still submit it, and if they're rejected, there are appeal processes that will allow them to work their way up the chain of command, And that process is detailed in the previous, you know, in the previous pop-up. And so that's where we are right now. The trends look very good, but I am not, you know, a clairvoyant, and so I'm not about to make any sort of prediction, but I'm saying we're moving in the right direction. But as of this time, we are still in the substantial category, according to ADHS, and so these businesses are not eligible to open without going through the attestation and appeals process. So, be happy to answer any questions you may have at this point.
Okay. Supervisor Angus.
Thank you. Are you aware that there's a lawsuit that was filed against the state from a gym that they won, and the court said that they could open, and I know the state is appealing? Do you know what the ramifications would be if that is upheld? Would that mean that gyms could open up?
It's my understanding that this documentation that was just released on August 10th is in response to the Governor losing that lawsuit, that this is his response and interim, so I don't know what's going to happen then, but certainly if the, you know, the Court of Appeals, State Court, says we have to allow them to open, then we will.
Has the state given you any idea how long it will take? I mean, this is a pretty lengthy process. I mean, the gyms are now telling me, my friends who own gyms, that they're on their way out. They can't have five, six months without bringing in any money. So this, this process itself is, you know, sounds like almost a month process. Have they given you any idea about this at, what is it?
Attestation.
It's just a...
What an annoying word.
It's just a form, right? The form that, that they, they are given permission by the state. How long is this process? Have they told you? Once, let's say that they go through it, once it's submitted, how long do you think it's going to take?
Once it's submitted, they should receive a response within 10 days. Now, if that response is not positive, I don't know about the appeal process.
Okay, so they, they fill this stuff out, does someone go visit the facility, or is it just done by, based on what they're being told, the state?
Yeah, basically, in addition to filling out the form, when you, when you basically override the "you're not allowed to yet," no, and you click on the "here," there's an area where the business can upload, you know, documents and information that would bolster their case to say, you know, just a hypothetical, that they are in fact able to maintain social distancing between bicycle machines, and, you know, or whatever it is that they're, you know, they're arguing, that they're, they should be allowed to reopen because they're doing so, and following all of the major mitigation strategies that, you know, are, that are required.
Can we go back for a second to the whole quadrant thing? So, where, is it the benchmarks are based on the quadrant, or the cumulative numbers? Are the three counties, La Paz, Yuma, and Yuma, out of all the counties in Arizona, really is off the charts, for whatever reasons? So, I don't know if that, that hurts us in a way that seems a little unfair. Another thing is that we, Mojave County, and I think we may be the only one, we didn't do as much blitz testing, right, as most of the other counties. I don't know why, you know, I don't, didn't think it was necessary, but now, it almost appears that we might be punished because of it, because if you did all that blitz, blitz testing with big numbers, right, and you got very few, you know, results, if you're just... few results, if you're just testing symptomatic people, your numbers are going to be higher. So are you seeing that? Am I getting that wrong?
Sorry, Supervisor Angus. So I do believe that, in terms of incorporating more testing of individuals who may have been close contacts, who may be asymptomatic, increasing testing can certainly have the effect of lowering the percent positivity level, right?
Yeah.
I think we saw that in May, when we had all those testing blitzes, and we had limited testing going on in the community, we did see a reduction, a lowering of our percent positivity level at that point.
So is the state taking that into consideration? Because, I mean, the state paid for the blitz all over, basically Maricopa, Pima, but not really for us. We had to sort of beg and scratch for it. But now it appears we're being penalized because of it.
Well, I think what they've noted is that when it comes to percent positivity, it's really hard to apply that type of standard all across the state. And they've said that for, not necessarily for the COVID-like symptoms and illness benchmarks, but certainly for percent positivity, that it's harder to measure the prevalence in that manner when you had targeted testing in your community. It can't be understated. I do want to point out very quickly that the other two metrics, so the percent positivity and the cases, whether or not it's, well, it's cases per 100,000, those are both on county level. That's county-level data. The only one that is regional in this case is the COVID-like illness and the syndromic surveillance work that goes into gaining that information. So the other two metrics really are our local county data.
Okay. So my last question, which is really a comment. So we're not even really talking about deaths anymore. They're measuring everything by number of cases, but not deaths? Because still the death numbers are pretty low.
I mean, I think, just looking at the benchmarks and the matrix, yes. I mean, it's all based on cases, percent positivity, and illness, so the impact to the hospitals.
All right. Thanks.
Does anyone else have any questions?
I have a question on that.
Supervisor Johnson, go ahead.
Supervisor Johnson, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Like with La Paz, yesterday, they were yellow, but today, they're back to red. I guess it's probably going to be confusing for our people, like Supervisor Angus mentioned, if we're lumped in with La Paz and Yuma, if they're going to be put in with the counties. I mean, it's good information to have, but if we're still being punished because other counties are staying in the red, that just seems a little odd to me.
So Supervisor Johnson, it's my understanding that the ADHS is updating the website that I just showed you, right, weekly. And again, with a 12- to 14-day lag period, we're going to see things after they have occurred. And they did update the website this morning. Because when I got up this morning, and I started looking over my presentation, and I went to the website, everything was red. And I was like, oh, no. This is not going to be fun. And then later on this morning, when I checked again, they had updated Mojave County to what we're seeing right now. And so my understanding is that they're going to update it weekly, because with the 12- to 14-day lag period, I guess there's not a strong argument for doing it more often than that.
The data may not change dramatically.
Yeah.
From a day-to-day basis. And what I also wanted to discuss briefly was about enforcement, because I realize that will come up. That's probably already been a question, and something that you may be already receiving concerns about. So as with other executive orders, our responsibility has been to go and educate and provide education to these business owners as we receive complaints coming in from the community. And that, so far, is what we have done. When we go out, we have the packet and the guidance for businesses. We have the executive order, and we share that information with those individuals so they understand the changes, and what's being asked of them, and how that affects their business or impacts their business at this time. So that is a step we will continue to do, of course. What we're recommending is that, moving forward, if we are to continue in that effort, we will, again, first visit will be education. The second visit will be more of a verbal warning to let them know that, look, you know, we realize this may be impacting your business, but this is the executive order, and this is what steps you need to take. The third would be providing a written notification, basically a written warning, that they're out of compliance with the executive order. But any further measures would require, at this point, law enforcement agencies to step in to close a business down. So that is not a step Public Health is in the position of doing. It is not in our authority to do. And so we will continue to do what is within our authority levels.
No questions. Thank you.
One final comment is, we are asking permission from the Arizona Department of Health Services to provide at county-level COVID-like illness data, syndromic surveillance data, to our businesses and to schools, because they are also impacted by that as well. So we are working towards that. And I just have not gotten an answer yet.
Denise, that will have no effect on the regional data, though, correct?
It will not. It will not. That is true. But to the degree that we can try to provide data on a local level, we will certainly make that effort. We've asked for assistance from ADHS, and our data team are also working on it. But one thing that's really important to note about data is, it's never as simple as you think it is. So, as you're probably well aware by this point, you know, our goal is to make sure that if we are in a position to provide that data out, we want to vet any system that we plan to use to provide that data, to make sure it's valid and reliable data, before we commit to providing it out to the community. Accuracy is really key here.
Denise, what is your direction to county employees, staff, as far as what we got earlier, as far as travel, meeting in groups less than 10? What are the guidelines for Mojave County employees?
For county employees? I believe we have those laid out in our pandemic annex. And I would ask them to refer to that document to get all the specifics of what that would look like for every county employee.
Okay. All right. Supervisor Johnson, go ahead.
Denise, I'm curious why the governor chose COVID-like illness? Because I could have a chest cold, and that would be a COVID-like illness.
Yeah. I do believe, Supervisor Gould, that they were really looking at what was impacting the hospitals. And I assume, and I apologize, I can't speak more to this, I can certainly bring back information that is maybe a little bit better than what I can provide at the moment. So I would appreciate the opportunity to look into that more, so.
That would be great. I also had another question. On the radio, I heard that a PCS test for SARS-CoV-2 virus, is that test exclusively to the SARS-CoV-V2 virus, or will it react to other coronaviruses?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the first part of that, what the actual test was?
The test, the PCS test for SARS-CoV-2 virus.
Okay. I'm not...
And will it react to other coronaviruses?
Would you be able to forward me that information, please, so I can look into that? And then I'll provide an answer back for you.
Okay. I won't be able to forward the information. I can forward you the question, though.
Okay. That would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thanks. That is all.
Go ahead.
Okay. So if there's nothing else on businesses, if there's no other questions, we also want to provide a short presentation on schools, because we realize schools is the next topic. And we are receiving a lot of questions from individuals about schools and reopening. So Tiara Morrison will be providing that presentation.
Good afternoon, Tiara.
Good afternoon and greeting, Madam Chair and members of the board. I'll be talking to you guys today about the school reopening and the benchmarks that were sent down by ADHS to help guide the school reopening. So we have four different scenarios for the school reopening. We have the traditional scenario, which we're all used to, which is when we have a no to a minimum spread in the community. So I want to point out that the spread definitions are the same for the businesses, for the minimal, the moderate, and the substantial categories. We also have the hybrid approach, which is where students can attend classes virtually, but also in the school building. So schools can do it in numerous ways, where they can have students go to school on different days. So you can have a cohort of students attend classes on Monday, and Wednesday, and Friday, and then a different cohort of students attending on Tuesday and Wednesday, and then they will alternate being in, attending school virtually. And then we have the virtual category, which is where all the students are attending online. And that is when there's a substantial spread within the community. But I want to point out that in each of the three scenarios that I just mentioned, that on-site support services are offered for students, which are the students who are for the free and reduced lunch, special needs, and those who need a space, a safe place to learn. And then we have the intermediate scenario, which is an emergency closure, and I'll speak more to that later. So then we have the benchmarks that were sent down by ADHS. And we have two key components for the school reopenings to the buildings for in-person instructions. So we have the quality of the school's mitigation plan, which is the how, and the level of spread occurring within the communities, which is the win. So we have copies of various schools' reopening plans, which includes their mitigation strategies. And we work with them to provide technical assistance for improvements and ways to implement those strategies if there were to be an outbreak. And then we have the win, which is similar to the businesses, which explains what is the minimal, moderate, and substantial rates for cases, percent positivity, and then the COVID-like illnesses. So, a little bit more about the benchmarks. So when each of the three levels hit a certain benchmark, then the school can proceed to move towards either the hybrid or the traditional scenario. So for cases, if we have two weeks below 100 cases per 100,000, which doesn't include the current week, it includes the two previous weeks, or a decline in cases for the weekly average. For percent positivity, two weeks with the percent positivity below 7%, which also does not include the current week. And for COVID-like illnesses, we have two weeks with hospital visits due to COVID-like illnesses below the 10%. So the on-site learning support. So school administrators can request a waiver to close their entire school district, which is based on an outbreak. So they can submit the request to us, and then we work with ADHS to determine whether or not the entire school district can be closed. So below is a decision tree, which will be sent out to the schools on Monday, which discusses the definition of what an outbreak is. So you have to have two or more laboratory confirmed COVID cases among students or staff within a 14-day period. So if you do not have that, then the school should continue with on-site learning support. If you do, you can move on to the next step, which are if you have two epidemiologically linked cases. So that's just basically two individuals who know each other and have come in contact with each other. If you do not have that, then you can continue with on-site learning support. But if you do, then you move on to the third criteria, which is cases who were not identified with close contacts of each other in another setting doing standard case investigation. So if they were discovered to be close contacts in a grocery store when you were doing your investigations, then you can continue with on-site learning support. Otherwise, if they haven't been close contact in another setting, then they can move on to work with us to request that waiver from ADHS. And then this last slide here is the ADHS dashboard that shows the three benchmarks that were discussed earlier. So this was as of yesterday around 4:00 PM. The dashboard was just updated this morning at 12:00. So I'm not sure what those rates are right now, but as of yesterday, we were in the green category for a decline in cases in two consecutive weeks for the COVID-like symptoms in hospitals. However, we're still in the substantial category for the percent positivity rates. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the board? I don't see any, Tiara.
Thank you.
I have a question for Denise.
Certainly.
Supervisor Angus, go ahead.
I went on the CDC website, and I pulled this off. And it's from February 1st, 2020, to August 1st, 2020, for the entire United States. 245 school-aged kids have died with COVID in the whole United States, not necessarily from it. In that same time, almost 19,000 kids that age have died from all causes. Do you think that that is an important number to take, whether it be the state, whoever's making these decisions? Do you believe that's an important statistic to make these decisions, whether or not children should go back to school? And it goes back to what I was talking about. We seem to have lost the idea that this was a deadly disease, that it's just not something where people are going to get sick. So with these numbers being so low, I mean, it's almost, they can't even chart, like, kids under the age of 10. It doesn't even come up as a percentage, because kids are not dying from this. Is that even being talked about anymore?
Well, Supervisor Angus, to your question, I don't believe there's been a great deal of discussion about the national numbers, of course. I mean, we're looking at things on a statewide and county level at this point. And I think the other aspect to that is that you have a fair number of administrative and teaching staff that are also affected by any transmission of the virus within the facility. So the kids are very important in that equation, of course, but I think we also have the other side of that to consider, which is the staff of the facility. So while children are not dying, and we may see fewer cases in that particular age group, I think it's a much larger picture that we need to look at within that school environment.
Just humor me here. Why are school staff, you know, treated differently than like all our employees?
Well, I don't know that they're treated differently.
Well, they are. I mean, they are. If their health and welfare is being considered about whether or not they open, I mean, look at all the businesses, except for the few that we mentioned earlier, most everything is open. Stores and supermarkets have been open forever. So why can't they be held to that same responsibility as a gym? You know? Why don't the schools be given that opportunity and then open immediately? Because these numbers of non-COVID deaths with kids is going to go up, and we all know that. So this is a discussion, I know this isn't for you.
Understood.
I'm just saying that, you know, we keep having these... You know, we keep having these discussions, but nothing ever seems to, to kind of change.
Understood.
But so I, I would hope that when people are making these huge decisions, and I speak to school board members all the time, and, you know, there's a lot of emotion in it too, that the emotion needs to be taken out, and some common sense needs to prevail.
Agreed. Agreed. Really. I don't have any other specific pieces of information to share with you. Are there any other questions you would like me to respond to?
Any other questions or comments?
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
We just brought up an interesting point. Last night, a Lake Havasu City School Board member mentioned there's an acceptable death rate for children. Do we have an acceptable death rate for children due to COVID or any diseases in Mojave County?
It's zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anyone else? And you did meet with the school officials just yesterday or the day before?
We did, and we will continue to do that, and work through school administrators to respond to questions and concerns that they have at the school level and the district level.
Okay. I have a question. How is the health department dealing with all of the YouTube videos and the news that's coming from, from different sources, whether it's legitimate sources or not? But, you know, there's so much of it out there on the internet, and I'm constantly getting questions from my constituents, because there's, there's information that contradicts everything that, that we say and do. So do you have any advice for those viewing or reading the minutes on, on this later? You know, how do people sort through this?
Well, I think there's a number of resources available out in the community that I would certainly guide people to. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention is key, our own Arizona Department of Health Services site, Johns Hopkins is another valid site, and I'm sure there's others out there that have reliable, valid data to share with, with people and, in helping them, that would help them make decisions.
Any other comments, questions, before I adjourn the meeting? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you for coming today. Thank you, Denise.